Process real.
Oh, they're not on. That's one.
There we go.
That's better.
Yes. Maybe we should go through the process real quick for folks here in the room as well as on TV.
Right, all right. The general process is that each candidate.
That's good.
We'll ask each candidate to give a short introduction to themselves and background and why they're interested in being on the planning board. Then we, as a planning board, have four questions we will ask each of the candidates. After that, we will have our deliberations and vote.
Perfect.
Can we turn that off?
It's almost done.
It's almost done.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know what it was.
And can you hear us OK up there? Do you need us to repeat that? Did you hear that? Westboro TV.
Westboro TV.
I don't think she can hear us at all.
Yes, OK, fine. All right. Welcome, Mr. Hedrick.
Thank you. Good evening.
Can you give us a little introduction?
OK. Thank you very much for having me, select board and planning board. I'm very happy to be here. My name is Christian Hedrick. I am obviously a Westboro resident. I am interested and I seek this appointment to the planning board for a variety of reasons. I have a background. My background is in architectural history and design. I have an undergraduate degree in history, a master's professional degree in architecture, practiced for a number of years, and then I went and got a PhD in architectural history from MIT, and then I taught for a number of years. So I have a pretty diverse array of experience that's sort of related, intimately related to planning. It's not a, I don't have a planning degree per se, but in my architecture program, we shared many classes with the planners, the planning department. So I've always been interested in planning. Planning is a key aspect to architecture and design and history. So I guess that's a brief kind of background. I have a, I wasn't sure if I'd be asked for a statement. I could read a statement that sort of specifies why I'm interested, I guess.
Sure, yes.
Just lead us off. Something I was thinking about earlier. "The task of a member of the planning board seems to me to be many things. On the one hand, you're asked to support the development, expansion, and improvement of your own town, while on the other hand, there's always a large constituent that does not wish for change in their town, whether they grew up here or have recently sought out characteristics of the new town they hope will never change. As a trained historian and former architectural designer, I'm keenly aware of this persistent pull in society between what is perceived as the past and the future, especially when it has to do with the places people call home. I have found that this tension can be very productive with the right attitude and thought and need not delve into fruitless arguments and stalemates. Everyone can see the benefits of growth and improvement in a town, and almost everyone can see the benefits of recognizing and honoring aspects of the past. How the board carries out these tasks, of course, makes all the difference. Westboro has a long and important history, and where we go in the future should certainly recognize that without hindering it. I think the task of the planning board is not an easy one, and I very much hope that if I'm selected, my insight into these issues and my experience will contribute to the continued success of the town of Westboro." Thank you. I should also mention I'm a member of the Design Review Board and Chair of the Historical Commission, which may or may not affect.
Thank you.
Your decision. Thank you.
We have a few questions for you. Mark, would you like to start?
Sure. Welcome, Christian. Could you please share with us what you know about the roles and responsibilities of the planning board?
Well, in terms of, well, it's to foster the growth and development of the town, I guess, very briefly. From the day-to-day, it seems to me, from my experience with watching planning board meetings, it has a lot to do with approving site plan evaluation, reconciling those issues with the code, with the overlay districts, with all kinds of aspects of the code, the bylaws, et cetera. So it's, in a way, I see it as facilitating development projects that, but maintaining them within the kind of parameters set by the town that we've historically set through town meeting or bylaws, et cetera. So I guess that's it, kind of in a nutshell, in a way.
Great, thanks.
There's a lot that you guys do, but.
John?
Planning board members can only make or take action and make decisions as a body and have no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that will contribute to the effectiveness of the board?
So I would say that many of those skills I've been honing with my experience on the Historical Commission and the Design Review Board. That's a similar idea there. No single person has the, you know, ultimate authority there. So working with people is one of the things that I do well, I think, with my architectural background. I've come from, you know, working in offices where, again, you know, you're on a team constantly. Every project is a team project, so I've been, I have a lot of experience with getting things done with a team and, you know, kind of checking my own, I guess, attitude at the door or my own sort of, but again, it's not just checking myself, but it's sort of explaining my position, I think, in an effective way, being a clear communicator, these sorts of things, I think, all kind of contribute to teamwork. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, can I just ask a follow-up before I get into my question?
Sure.
So you said you're an architect. Is that your primary business right now?
No, right now, well, it's architectural consulting. So it's a, my business is very, it ranges from all kinds of work, from, you know, contractors needing historical, you know, they need to conform to the secretary standards, you know, rehabilitation standards, something like that. They'll hire me to kind of ensure that and be part of the team, to everything from design guideline production for domestic and foreign groups. I do a fair amount of work in the Middle East as well, so it has to do with, a lot of it has to do with consulting with groups who are seeking out a kind of design aesthetic based on some kind of existing context or existing sort of formation or even historical background to a particular place, and they're looking to kind of formulate design guidelines based on kind of what was there before and trying to work with them to try to, you know, come up with things that might guide future design, I guess, to a certain extent.
Is there anything that you've done in the town of Westboro for that, or is that?
No.
OK. And then the question here is, you know, what is your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use?
In terms of land use, I don't have a lot of experience. I am, most of my experience comes from code review and code analysis, so I try to be, I used to be very, very familiar with the Massachusetts Code and the healthcare code and the design and healthcare standards, because I was, actually, I was a healthcare architect when I did practice. So that job was often, and I did a lot of medical planning, so I had to constantly reconcile these different aspects of the code with a kind of production of a healthcare institution. So there are a lot of restrictions, yet a lot of demands. So that was, that complexity was what kind of drew me towards that. In terms of permitting, I have a certain basic understanding of how it works. Again, as part of my work with the Design Review Board and Historic Commission, I have like a decent understanding of how it works, but in terms of this scale, it's a little bit newer for me, I think. Thank you.
All right. The planning board recently approved a master plan document in 2021, and it's currently working on the prioritization and implementation of those goals through an implementation committee. What is your familiarity with the town master plan?
I'm fairly familiar with it, particularly in terms of the Historical Commission's role. We're constantly checking that, our status and what we're doing to document a number of historic properties in town that's part of the master plan goals. I've also been keenly interested in this downtown planning project that just sort of was published last week, which I've been still trying to digest. But as far as how that fits into the master plan isn't interesting, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of things to kind of reconcile or deal with there in terms of how the downtown plan fits into the master plan and, yeah, but the general familiarity I have with working with it is the historical aspect of it.
How would you contribute to its implementation?
To which implementation?
To its, the master plan's implementation.
Well, in terms of, as a planning board member versus a Historical Commission, OK. I suppose I haven't, I haven't considered how the planning board per se is implementing all of the master plan issues. I am more familiar with the Historical Commission's role and its implementation and how we're implementing that. I would have to, again, review the document in light of being a planning board member. I'm not a planning board member, so I'd have to consider it in that light, I suppose, more critically, kind of revisit it.
Yeah, and this is sort of repetitive, but what areas of the master plan are you most interested in and why?
Well, I think, I think beyond the historical aspect, I'm very interested in affordability, affordable housing. I have a good working relationship with the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and we often talk about historical properties that might be of interest to them. That seems to be a kind of a regular discussion we have. I'm also interested in recreation and open use and a lot of the things that the CPA Committee kind of deals with in terms of the, in terms of the master plan, kind of like those kind of points.
All right. Does anybody on the select board have any questions for this candidate? I guess not. Mark?
Christian, just, this appointment would be through the end of, until the next election. Do you have a sense of what your intention would be come March, or, again, it's a five-year position, so.
Right.
Six months is a very short time to get up to speed.
Right.
And I'm just trying to figure out, again, no commitment necessary, but just trying to figure out where we're going to be in, in March.
But just to clarify, I think this seat only has two years left in the term, right?
Correct. That's right.
OK.
Not everybody serves multiple terms, but.
Hazel.
All right, go ahead. Anyway, just.
So just for clarification, the recipient would be up for election in March, and then they, if they were to be.
If they chose to pull papers, they would have to pull papers like a candidate, they would.
Right, and then if they were elected, they would have two years.
Two years, correct.
OK.
Well, to be fair, I think my seat is up as well, so I plan on rerunning, but you could technically run for the five-year term or the two-year term.
Yeah, you could run against John.
Pull papers for one of them.
Probably don't want to do that. Yes, or, yeah, they're staggered, it's every year, isn't it, that the one term?
Yeah.
That's the idea. OK. I, I mean, I can't say I'm very interested in the planning board. I've been, I've had a number of people, being part of the Design Review Board, say, hey, you should think about the planning board. So I found this to be a pretty excellent opportunity to kind of try it out.
Great.
You know, it's hard to say whether, you know.
Yeah, I don't, again, no commitment, I'm just trying to get a sense of whether.
But, yeah, I mean, potentially, it's something I'd be interested in pursuing, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Hedrick.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Ms. Kelleher, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Chris Kelleher, and I've been a Westboro resident for about 10 years. I'm currently serving on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and through that have discovered whole new realms, I guess you could say, in terms of like how the town operates. In addition to being an active member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I'm also a very active participant in town. I think some low-hanging fruit is, of course, town meeting, but I also attend sessions, have done surveys, other feedback, conversations around the different changes that we have in town, whether that's the downtown plan, the library, the community center, golf course, superintendent search, et cetera. It's critical to me to try and continuously identify opportunities to participate so that I can make the town all that it can be for myself. I have two young kids in the school system, very invested in the future of the town. And additionally, through understanding more within the master plan, really understanding where we can enact change, where we can dig in, and then where other opportunities may lie in some other change, that's, the planning board is a great way to help kind of implement some of that change as well.
Thank you. Mark?
Hi, Chris. Thanks for coming in. I'm going to ask you the same question. I just have to get back there. Share with you, share with us what you know about the roles and responsibilities of the planning board.
Yes, I think on surface, it's trying to find a balance between residential and commercial needs within the town to ensure, ensure kind of an equilibrium. More in practice, it's looking at the zoning bylaws, it's looking at site plans, it's reviewing housing authority plans and documentation, it's supporting applicants and applications as they come through to, you know, work towards the current bylaws and systems that we have in place.
Thank you.
All right. "Planning board members can only take action or make decisions as a body and has no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that will contribute to the effectiveness of the board?"
So I am a marketer by trade. I've, I've been in marketing for over a decade at very large, complex, global brands. I'm very familiar with needing to kind of work through matrix organizations, understanding different priorities, collaboration, negotiation, whether that's with colleagues or whether that's negotiating contracts and deals, et cetera, of which I've done many from small to large. I think when, when I think about how those apply here, while it's not a business in the same sense, there's still a need to understand priorities of different groups, ensuring that equilibrium, that balance, and knowing when something will have, like, what's the intended effect as well as an unintended effect from a decision that might be made.
Thank you. John?
What is your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use?
Yes, so personally, I have conservation land on my property, and we've done work on the property, so worked with past conservation directors to understand for permitting, understanding the bylaws as it relates to conservation for my own home and property. Additionally, as part of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, we have had the opportunity to speak with the various department heads and understand kind of how current permitting or bylaws are kind of impact the various departments and what that might mean. And I think through that have, obviously, there are things that aren't visible on surface to an everyday resident unless you really dig in, but that's really helped kind of understand a lot of the why behind why a lot of decisions are being made.
Thank you. "The planning board recently approved a master plan document in 2021 and is currently working on the prioritization and implementation of those goals through an implementation committee. What is your familiarity with the town's master plan?"
Yes, so being a member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I am deeply aware of the different priorities and was part of the discussion process in terms of prioritizing the 150 to 200 or so different priorities laid out through the master plan. In addition, I'm familiar with how that aligns to current departments and where there are some kind of quicker wins versus a lot more of kind of the long build in terms of implementing the plan.
How would you contribute to its implementation?
I actually feel that being on both the Master Plan Implementation Committee as well as the planning board would benefit both sides. Being on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, there are frankly many like myself who it's their first committee experience. I think the more kind of insight into the how and the why that can be pulled into the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the better. And then on the inverse, being able to continuously bring forth those goals and objectives to the planning board as different circumstances arise.
And what areas of the master plan are you most interested in and why?
Yes, so there are, there are a few. Economic development is one that I just find continuously interesting. I'm, I'm very excited about a lot of the changes that will come through, or the opportunities for change that will come through the downtown plan. Additionally, transportation, I think the, again, the downtown plan will, will help some of the traffic challenges, but also thinking about not just transportation for cars, but like how are we, if we really want to be a walkable town, how are we enabling walking? How are we thinking about that experience as well as biking? I'm excited about the B-Walt, too, and what that provides and how we're facilitating and setting ourselves up to be a town where you can get from one end to the other, you can get to the commuter rail, you can get downtown. I think that that holds a lot of benefit in the, in the near and definitely in the long term for the town itself.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the board that would like to ask a follow-up question?
Should Mark ask his question?
I just want to ask the same question, if you have a sense of your intention, or, again, no commitment necessary, just trying to get a feel for where we're going to be in March.
Yes, my, my current intention would be to run for the seat. I wouldn't run against John, that seems not nice, but run for the, the additional two years of this term. That's, that's my current intention.
Is there anyone on the select board that would like to ask a follow-up question? Sean?
Question, actually, I think it's for the planning board itself.
I can barely hear you, but let's.
How about now? OK, thank you. Thank you. I got a tech guy with me. As a member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, would you have an issue with a second planning board member being on that committee?
I would, I would say no. We, we would have to have, if we had three planning board members on that committee, we'd have to worry about quorum, but we could also, either of these candidates could take the planning board representative to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I don't, it's, John could do it, Hazel could do it. You know, we vote every year to replace, to appoint that position, so I don't necessarily think it's, from my standpoint, it's not an issue to have two people, but we don't necessarily have to stay with two people if somebody had an issue with it.
Yeah, I guess, can I just get some clarification, because is it, is it just that there would be two planning board members on one committee, or is it specifically the Master Plan Implementation Committee?
Well, I think in that, on that committee specifically, what it's 13 members, there's, you know, town manager, planning director, there's some designated positions, there's one designated for the planning board, one designated for the select board, and then I don't know how many members are just town residents.
Yeah, I mean, normally, we try for town committees in which there is essentially a seat for a planning board member, to have one member of the planning board to be on that particular committee. So my guess is that we would probably keep to that, because that would be the most efficient way to do it and.
So if Christian gets appointed, we'd have two planning board members on the Design Review Board, and currently, Mark and I are two planning board members on the Open Space Preservation Committee.
Yeah, I mean, I just. You know, if it, I think we have six or seven at-large members on Master Plan Committee, and Sean, if you want to, if you want to be on it.
I'm not saying I have any.
I'm more than happy to have two select board members on it.
Saying I have any issue with it, I'm saying when the committee was created, it was a planning board member, a select board member.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if somebody feels like that's disproportionate representation, then we'd be more than happy to limit it to one. I, you know, I feel like with a 13-member committee, we're kind of a large committee as it is, and we've, you know, we had one person step off and we reduced the size, and we didn't really feel the impact of that, so.
I'm just presenting it as food for thought.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's a good thought, and I think one of the problems we have as a planning board is that there are a number of committees in town which have seats for planning board members, and there are only five of us, and so consequently, a number of us have had to serve on more than one committee in order to fill that vacant seat. So every year, we kind of look at these and try to move them around sometimes to give people of the planning board kind of a different idea of the various committees that are available and what they're doing. So that's sort of how we work on doing that. Seems to work the best way at this particular time. Thank God.
Hazel, can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
I just want to say I'm really excited that we have two really good candidates. I was, you know, we've seen a lot of committees on this town, not necessarily full capacity, so it, you know, whatever the issues are with multiple planning board members on committees, I, I think that's a great thing. I mean, I wish we had a waiting list for all our committees, that'd be awesome, so.
And I'd just make a final word before we discuss the candidates and thank them both for appearing before us, and I'm hoping that, obviously, we cannot select both candidates, but I'm hoping the one that we are, we do not select tonight will be able to continue working with the town and looking forward to having them participate in various town committees and bodies. So thank you, Ms. Kellner.
Thank you.
Are there any comments any of the board would like to make, or would someone like to make a motion? Decision's been made?
Thanks, Ian. So just a clarifying question, kind of, I don't know what Sean asked. So one of the candidates, Mr. Hedrick has, sits on the Historical Commission, and that is an appointed position.
No.
Right?
No, it's not.
It's elected?
No.
No, no, no. So you appoint the Design Review Board members, correct?
No, not on the Historical Commission.
Design Review Board.
Design Review Board.
So you appoint a member from your board to that?
That's correct.
Right, and the Historical Commission is appointed?
No, the Historical Commission is, is appointed by the select board, but there is not a planning board seated, seat on the Historical Commission.
OK, so it's, this is a two-part question, then. So for the Historical Commission, would the board, the planning board, see any conflict or issue with having a planning board member also on the Historical Commission? I know it's allowed because it's not an elected position, I'm just asking how the board would feel about that.
Shelby, I was on the Historical Commission. I only resigned two years ago, maybe so. The major portion of my time on the planning board, I have also been sitting on the historical commission. And I have not found any conflict during that period. That answer?
Yeah, it's the, the question's to the board.
I, I mean, I would also hope that if we have a vacancy on any of these commissions, that if there was a planning board member that was serving as an at-large member and there was competition for that open seat, the planning board member would remove themselves from that competition to allow another community member to serve. That would be my hope. Obviously can't control that.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, again, I was just, I, I want to make sure there wasn't a conflict. Validating you did, I just wanted to hear, you know, hear your thoughts from the board. And then the other one is on design review board on the appointed seat. So that would be the second part. Is there, is there any issue that you foresee? I'm guessing no, because.
Yeah, I've been the, I've been the representative on the, the design review board. And I think planning board should only have one representative on the design review board. And I think Mr. Hedrick's aware of the fact that if he and I would have a discussion about which one of us, if he is on the planning board, would continue on the design review board. Because I, then I think we want to broaden the membership, particularly on the design review board.
Thank you.
Are there any other open questions at the moment on this?
Are we just doing questions or are we discussing? What's, what's the question here?
I suggest that if, I mean, I will be glad to take, make a motion. We could have discussion on the motion.
I mean, do we want to, I would, I mean, if we, if we make a motion, are we only going to be discussing that candidate? Or are we going to be discussing that candidate versus the other candidate?
No, you'd be discussing that candidate.
Yeah, so I think there needs, should be some discussion between the two candidates at some point, no? Unless everyone's already made up their mind.
I think that's a very good point, Sean.
I just discussed one candidate, I think we should discuss both candidates. And then, you know, at some point, somebody feels brave enough to make the motion, they can do that.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I guess, I guess I can start. I think both candidates are excellent. And I'm really, to Mark's point, really excited that both of them stepped up. And I really hope that they continue looking for opportunities to volunteer in town. I think they both have their strengths and, I don't even want to say weaknesses, just their strengths in different areas. You know, Christian clearly has a, a lot of experience and expertise in the historical aspect and architecture and that, that type of stuff, which will serve the board in knowing what architects can do and what they can't do, you know, when we always talk about, hey, can you do this or can you do that? Can you make this building look that way? And, and a little bit of experience with the permitting process and that whole code compliance issue. I think Chris Keller's experience is a little different in that she's been involved with the master plan implementation committee. So she has more of a wider range of knowledge of what's going on in the town. But I also see the, I think she mentioned something about negotiation and contracts. And it just kind of, it said something in my head of the decisions that we're making on site plan and special permits kind of end up being in negotiation anyway. And I'm thinking back to the Cold Harbor issue where we were trying to get that sidewalk and a donation. And so having some, I am not a negotiator, having some skill in that regard may be beneficial. So I think there's benefits to both. And I don't, I don't know which way would be, would serve the board more at this point, but I think there is a benefit to either one of them.
John, do you have any comments?
No comment.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I, I think I said before, I'm really excited about these two candidates. I wish I didn't have to make a choice. I really wish we could appoint both in some way with an alternate. But we do have to make a choice. And one of the things for me that is important, when I look at a lot of the committee representation in this town, I look at diversity and I feel like, you know, that might be a factor for me in my final decision is trying to, I mean, again, I just feel like a new, they're both participating in town, but I feel like there's an opportunity here to represent a viewpoint in this town that may be under, underrepresented.
I agree, I think both are excellent candidates. And I'm really very pleased that they've made the time to come before us and to express their opinions on things. I think both would be good additions to the board. I think what I'm looking for is which person I feel personally would benefit our board the most at this particular time with the kinds of things we do. And so I will really base my decision on that. Is there anyone from the select board that'd like to comment?
Sorry about that. Not to be repetitive, but I'll just say I'm really, really excited to have two very strong candidates here. I found them both to have compelling answers to the questions that were in front of them. I will say that I found that, I just want to get the names right here. Mr. Hedrick, very strong background, relevant background to the, to the planning board, I felt. However, I did also feel that Christina's understanding of the town and her answers in regards to the way the town is built and how it operates and the different functions of the town, I thought she had a much stronger answer for those. I thought she had a much more concise answer on some of the questions. So I, I thought that, from an interview perspective, I thought that she did better.
Thank you. Ian?
Yeah, I'm not going to be repetitive, but thank you both for, for putting your names in the hat here. I think the thing that I've thought about as we've done these appointments, joint appointments in the past is, it really is, as was stated before, it's filling that open term. So it's really looking at who the individual is that can come in. And I'd say best kind of hit the ground running for the short period of time in terms of that. I think, again, both bring skills in. I think for me, this is, it's tough because of the two names here. So I think you introduce yourself as Chris or Christina and Christian. But for, for Chris, you know, being on that master plan implementation committee, and I'm not on that committee. But, you know, having that involvement with a lot of stuff that's going on in planning, sounds to, to me feels like it may be a, a good fit to kind of come in and kind of hit the ground running. But now I know that the planning board is doing much more than master plan implementation too. That's, you know, kind of a, a different role here. But it's really, and I guess I'm looking to the planning board too for, for you guys. As I look at it, who, you know, in your eyes can best come in for this interim period until that March election to, as I said, kind of hit the ground running to, to fill the position and make you a, a full five-member board.
I'll just quickly add one note here. Ian reminded me, being the select board's representative on the master plan implementation committee, Kristian has been a, a regular attendee of those meetings, has been interested. She's been part of the conversations. She's helped us get through some interesting discussions. So I think that she's shown that, you know, she's a strong representative of the town and the better interest of the town. So just put that in there as well.
John?
So thank you both for volunteering to step up and expand your role and involvement in the town. It is, it is greatly appreciated. When I think about the two candidates and their strengths, well, I think the architectural background can be beneficial to some of the work of the planning board. I see that the work of the planning board is much more diverse. And a, and a lot of the architectural elements and code compliance, things of that nature, really become a function of the community, community development department as permits are applied for and that level of review goes through. At the zoning level, and really what I see is somewhat unique about the master plan is that it impacts the entire town beyond the direct scope of authority of the planning board. So it talks about economic development. Though economic development doesn't report to the planning board, it reports up through other mechanisms in government is, is just one example. So having a, a good understanding of that and the relationship between the different elected bodies in town government, the different, and the different appointed authorities and committees in town government's really important. Because implementation, that, that document is supposed to be our guide to all boards and committees about how we make decisions over the next five to 10 years and what our priorities should be. When we're making decisions, you know, relevant to the development, expansion, nature, culture, livability of our community. And so having that deep involvement with that will, I think, serve the planning board well because it brings in that perspective as you look at site plan reviews and special permits. And, and the, the negotiation experience, particularly with respect to mitigation. You know, I'm, I'm not aware of, you know, any project that I've watched through the process where there hasn't been some level of negotiation, whether it's mitigation or, you know, going for, you know, needing to go for variances, things of that nature, where those skills won't come into play. So I feel that makes her a very strong candidate.
I'd just kind of like to respond to that. I have worked with Kristin on both, on both the historical commission and the design review board. And one of the things I really admired about him is he comes fully prepared and steps out and really does more than is required for the meetings. As far as the master plan goes, he may not be as familiar as Christine is with it. However, there are, I was on the original plan, on the master plan. Mark is on the implementation committee. So I think, you know, I think our board is fully aware of the master plan and the needs of it and what goes on. So I, I think, I don't look on that as a, for me, that's not a, a real necessity to have someone come on the board who is familiar with the master plan. Because I'm looking more towards someone who is, as I said, I've been, I've been so impressed with Christian's worth ethic and the way he's come prepared for the meetings that he's been with both historical and design review, that I think that's another aspect of a planning board member that is as important as sitting on it. Because I think, you know, one of the jobs of the planning board member is to make sure that we are familiar with the things that are going on in town and the various site plans and the effect of decisions being made throughout the town and how that affects the town as a whole. So just.
My comment wasn't to imply that that knowledge of the master plan and its implementation was lacking, but more in line with Ian's comments about being able to hit the ground running and having that, the broader context for the month-to-month, day-to-day work of the committee.
Mark?
So again, in, partially, partially in response, Christian has presented to the planning board before and he's been very impressive. So this is not about, you know, for me, that's not really what, you know, I'm not trying to say that he's not prepared or any of that. But I've worked closely with Chris Kelleher on the master plan implementation committee. And I know Hazel probably just met her for the first time tonight. But I can vouch that she comes prepared, she's knowledgeable, she's, she'll be a tremendous asset to this board, as, as they both would. So it, you know, I don't, yeah, again. Well, again, I just felt like I had to counterbalance what you were saying a little bit, so.
I'd like to respond a lot to pile on.
I did have one more question though. Do we have any procedure or anything in place as far as whether town staff can ask questions or comment? Or is it just the board? Again, I don't know what's appropriate, so if that's out of line, let me know. But we have a town planner here, we have the, no, that's out of line. Oh, I'm getting a no, that's out of line.
I don't think that is allowed.
Okay, just wanted to ask.
So, yeah, I just wanted not to pile on Alan or anything like that. But I, I do want to say that our architecture has a larger role than like the facade of buildings too. So, you know, when you're an architect, you also deal with economic development and, you know, pedestrian, not transportation, but pedestrian connectivity around certain areas and stuff like that. So I don't know where it's necessarily going to end up on that thought, but I think architecture is a little bit more wide-ranging than a lot of us may think sometimes.
Do you mind if I go first, Shelby?
Oh, go ahead. Shelby?
No, I, I just want to say thank you both for participating today. Thank you for what you've done historically for the town and what you'll continue to do for the town. The last time there was a planning board vacancy, there was four candidates for that job. And I felt like that time it was easier to choose. So thank you both for participating. I look forward to working with both of you in the future. Thank you.
I'm going to take that as a compliment.
That was a really tough process.
Is that okay? Yeah, so again, thank you. I won't go through any redundant comments other than to thank both of you for stepping forward and, and really welcome the diverse experience that you both bring. My vote here is largely, I mean, I've worked with Christian a little bit. I've not worked with Chris at all, although certainly her work here has been conveyed as it, as it relates to contributing to the town. I'm really looking to the planning board members to hear what you need in this seat. That really is going to be, that will guide my vote and how I will support either of these very qualified candidates who bring diverse experience. So I need to hear from all four of you a little, in a little bit more detail as to what you see on the horizon for your board and what skills and, you know, kind of what you need.
So I will say, it's not what I need, it's what the town needs? Okay, so, I mean.
Representing the planning board on behalf of the town.
So again, I made the point about diversity. I think that's something that the town could always benefit more of. But I also feel like the negotiation piece that was brought up, I've been on this board a long time, so has Hazel. We end up in some difficult negotiations where that skill is, would be beneficial for us. Because I know that I second guess a lot of the, the decisions we've made. I mean, I second guess what I had for breakfast this morning sometimes. But, you know, the point is, is I feel like that's a big one for me. Is, you know, we get in with these big corporations and attorneys and they're paid a lot to negotiate with citizens like us. And while we have a really good planner in place, I think having somebody on the board who's comfortable in that role is a big factor.
John?
So I guess to me, you've always got the details and the big picture. And planning decisions are very far-reaching and kind of getting into a little bit of everything. You know, some of the decisions we made recently, and I mentioned the Cold Harbor one, that was in response to a variance granting from the ZBA for lowering open space requirements. Not to get into too much detail, but they, you know, didn't have to put a sidewalk in front. So we were trying to figure out how to do B-Walt, public transportation, pedestrian connectivity, open space mitigation, and also balance that with economic development issues of having a very successful brewery and restaurant in town and not wanting to make it harder for them to operate, but to get what we want from the town. So it's kind of like understanding how these small, what seems to be small decisions kind of touch a little bit of everything. And having that bigger picture of how all of these things are intertwined. And if we, if we make a decision on one item this way, how does that impact the goals on other topics over here? So it's kind of really seeing, what I'd be looking for is somebody who can really see the whole picture, not get necessarily bogged down in the details because as, you know, Mark said, we've got professional staff to really go over compliance with the bylaws. Though having that knowledge is also very helpful. And then trying to figure out a workable solution that benefits the residents, but doesn't put out the applicants too much.
And I'm looking for someone who is looking at the big picture, who has had some experience with town committees and working. with town committees and working with the select board or the planning board, and really having an idea, looking at, being able to look at the broad picture, but also being able to look at the various parts of that picture and how they work together. And I think that, to me, is the important thing, along with the diversity aspect. But I think the broad view is very important. You can look at the, there are many pieces that make up this view we have of our community. And I want someone who's had some experience in different areas within the town. And I think that's also a very important thing that people have, and, you know, have had experience serving on committees and working with people within the town.
Ready for a motion? All right, I move that we nominate, appoint Chris Kelleher to the planning board.
Is there a second? I think we're all, John?
Yay.
Yes.
Nay.
Yes.
You pull the board there. Blackboard.
I'll support that motion. Yes.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Chris. We're delighted to have you join our board.
Thank you, Christian.
Thank you, Christian.
And thank you, Christian, for your application, and I hope you'll stay involved.
Thank you both.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the update on the housing bond bill by Jenny.
So Jenny Jengris, Director of Planning, and I'm here to just give an overview of the Affordable Homes Act that was recently signed in by the governor on August 6th, which essentially amends some of the zoning act. I know a publication was sent out from KP Law that explained a lot of these things, so this is really going to just be a brief overview of what the changes are and then what we're looking at from Westboro's perspective. And so the changes in the Affordable Homes Act are in effect now as of the date of the signing of the bill, except for the new ADU requirements, which will take effect on February 2nd of next year. So this, these are the new requirements under the housing bond bill for accessory dwelling units. It makes ADUs as of right in every city and town if they align with the new definition. And these new provisions in 40A supersede any inconsistent local bylaws already in place. So, to give a comparison of how you can think of it, we, in, under 40A of mass general law, we exempt religious uses and agricultural uses from requiring a special permit, but the towns are allowed to have reasonable regulations such as setback requirements and other dimensional requirements. So this is now under 40A, similar to that protection. It's provided very similar protections. So for the summary of the new requirements, ADUs must be allowed as of right in all single-family residential zoning districts. It allows up to 900 square feet attached or detached. The cities and towns cannot impose owner occupancy requirements. The municipality can regulate or prohibit short-term rentals of ADUs. It clarifies that the square footage reference applies to gross floor area. The town can require reasonable regulations such as site plan review, setback requirements, height, et cetera. And then a special permit may be required for more than one ADU. So currently, Westboro does allow ADUs by right. We just have some slightly different requirements, which we will need to take a closer look at and amend these, but that is not planned to happen until March town meeting. So currently, we do allow by right certain types of ADUs. The gross floor area cannot be greater than 50% of the primary dwelling or 1,000 square feet, whichever is smaller. The requirement is that it has to be attached to the principal dwelling, it has to be owner occupied, it must have a separate, or it cannot have a separate entrance, it cannot be occupied by more than two people or have more than two bedrooms. There's a requirement to share utility metering, and then that the stairways must be enclosed and not visible from the outside. So many of these things are not compliant with the changes to 40A, so we would need to revise those. We do allow an ADU by special permit if it's more than 1,000 square feet or detached structure. So currently, that special permit is done through the Board of Appeals. So that is the ADUs. I don't know if you want to ask questions on that, I can try to answer before I move on to the next change in the housing bond bill.
Could you go to the prior slide, please?
This, this one? Or Westboro requirements?
No, the prior one, not the Westboro. So, the new legislation, I want to make sure I understand the fourth bullet point under summary, municipalities can regulate or prohibit short-term rentals?
Right.
Okay. And does the law, because I have not read it, give guidance to that, or that guidance is forthcoming in February?
EO HLC will provide more guidelines as it pertains to short-term rentals, but this is the specific guidelines for what a town can require for an ADU.
Okay, and the second to last bullet is, can require reasonable regulations such as, so will there be further guidelines as to the very vagueness of, and I know it's not your word, but reasonable?
So, that is a discussion that I've had with KP Law and many other towns and municipalities have had that same discussion. Right now, in 40A, the same language is there for religious and agricultural uses, so it tends to be at the discretion of the town on what that interpretation is. But from what I understand and how I've interpreted is that it cannot be any more restrictive than what you require for a single-family home. So you cannot make it more restrictive than you would for a single-family residential use. And that is, tends to be the, what many towns and municipalities have come up with.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question, it's really going to display my zoning and permitting ignorance here. For residential properties, single-family residential, is there an open space requirement? I know there are setbacks. If, so if I bought a piece of property that doesn't have a single-family home on it, is there an open space requirement for a single-family, other than setbacks?
Yes, there are, there is an open space requirement for residential uses.
Okay, and is that a percent of the property? Is that like how it works in commercial?
I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head for single-family, but there is a requirement. And so this would apply.
Would that, so these accessory dwelling units would be accessory to the principal use, so that, that restriction probably wouldn't apply to the accessory use? Because you wouldn't be regulating the accessory dwelling unit like you would a principal use, right?
I think she's talking about the restrictions for the overall open space on a lot. You can have accessory structures such as garages or other things that would count towards those dimensional controls.
And I'm not looking that we have all the answers right now, but John, your question is exactly where I was going with that, is that now if you add that, that would encroach upon an initial requirement of open space for a given district, if you will.
So, those are things that we would look at, but...
Well, Jenny, you still have to, even with these, you still have to, are confined by certain zoning laws within your particular town.
Correct, there's still dimensional requirements.
If your town says you can have, you can't have less than, your buildings cannot cover more than, let's say, 40% of the property, I don't know what the requirement here is in town, we could ask, if Fred was here, is he still here, breaking into the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, if that's your requirement, then, you know, you still are bound by that.
Okay, so I think that the details of all this, I won't, lots of other questions, but I think understanding the layers within this is going to be really important for the public to understand, and how that impacts applications, obviously, to our community development department.
Yes, and we will be doing this similar to what we do for other zoning articles, public information sessions, things like that. And this doesn't take effect until February 2nd, so I think we have plenty of time to hash that out.
Go ahead. What, what does the law, our current zoning, say with respect to ability for the property owner to rent the ADU long-term rental? Is that by right, or is that something that would require a special permit?
So, my understanding is that the current bylaw restricts it to a family member or a caregiver. I don't know about long-term rental.
Well, it says in the presentation that you cannot restrict it to owner occupancy, so...
But Westboro currently does, I believe.
No, we would have to change. So, I don't want to necessarily get it too much into, my point on this was, my hand raises, that we have a zoning subcommittee that's going to review this, present a bylaw amendment, going to consider a lot of these things, and then we'll have a presentation on that specific bylaw amendment where a lot of these questions will get covered, including to the, the planning board will have a public hearing on it. So, I realize there's a lot of like, what's going to happen here, what's going to happen, and we could be here all night doing that, and I don't mind because I'm used to it, but I would suggest that we actually have a draft bylaw to discuss before we get too stressed about it. My stress comes more from the timing of it all, because this just passed, every town in the state is trying to figure this out. We're lucky because we have an early town meeting, we don't have to rush and get this done in October, that would be a nightmare, and hopefully somebody else is the guinea pig on this and we know what the Attorney General will approve. My biggest concern is that we need to get a bylaw posted by February 2nd so that we don't have a gap there. But also, we need to have something that will pass town meeting, we can't guarantee that, and we also need to have something that will get approved by the AG, we can't guarantee that. So, if that does happen, it doesn't pass town meeting, or if it doesn't get approved by AG, well then we've got big concerns. So we got to get it right the first time.
Well, except the other problem that we're dealing with this time is that there's still lots of the nitty-gritty, which has not come to us yet. So, it's going to be difficult, and I think what's going to happen is that we're going to end up probably having to do more than one zoning change. But we won't know that at this particular time. We'll know some of the basics, but we will not know all the specific rules and regulations because we don't have them. And so I think we're going to have to, you know, make a start at this point with some of their changes in our bylaws, but this doesn't mean that we're not going to have to make further changes down the line.
Yeah, so if I could just finish, Hazel. My question, which this was all leading to a question, believe it or not, and I've heard the word moratorium thrown around a lot, and I don't know if that's a feasible thing we could do on this, but can we put a temporary moratorium in on ADUs to, till we get this figured out?
No.
Is that not...
That was a, yeah, that has been a question that towns have asked, and the answer was no. This goes into effect on February 2nd and will be a protected use, similar to the religious and agricultural exemptions.
Mark, if I can...
Fred, excuse me, Fred, just a second. Fred, did you have something you wanted to add?
That would be very helpful.
Fred, the narrow community development director for the town. I don't want to get into all the particulars. Single-family developments, a single-family house now has lot coverage, which is a little different than the open space. There is a distinction there. We haven't really come across it for our single-family residents, it really hasn't bumped up against anything that we've permitted in town. My opinion, I've talked to the planning director about this, is that ultimately we should have some kind of special permit for ADUs, whether we call them oversized ADUs or bigger ADUs, because our special permit is more forgiving than what's being proposed, being that you can now apply for a special permit for a structure, an ADU over 1,000 square feet, which has come forward many times. We don't typically do a ton of ADUs in town, there's probably been a handful every year, but I would anticipate that we would look at some kind of special permit to allow these structures over 900 square feet. If you don't, it then becomes a variance, so it'd be harder for people to apply for a bigger ADU. Those would be worked out, as the planning director alluded, in my opinion, in the March meeting, town meeting.
Thank you, Fred.
Sure.
Any more questions? Jenny? Yeah, Shelby?
Just clarification, then, on the timeline, it sounds like this won't be ready, I know you're having public hearings, I saw that post in the paper, so I did see that, this may not be ready for October, right? Because we're still learning, so we would need to have a special town meeting? Is that possible? Because our town meeting wouldn't be till March.
So, the zoning bylaw is technically, goes into effect at the time of the first publication of the planning board hearing. So the first notice that there's a planning board hearing is when the zoning bylaw can go into effect, so that if it passes that town meeting, it's retroactive to that date. So if we post the ADU bylaw before February 2nd...
I didn't know that.
Yes.
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay. So some more exciting stuff to go over on zoning, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm just going to go over my knowledge based on what I know from KP Law and then my knowledge of zoning and planning. So, another change to 40A is the merger of lots under common ownership for specific types of lots. So essentially, there is a new regulation that the merger doctrine, which is when you have a lot that is potentially non-conforming that you own, that is next to a lot that you also own, they merge, they become in common ownership. So that lot, while it's non-conforming, it's not protected under zoning, you can't build on it unless it meets the zoning requirements. So, the merger doctrine does not apply to certain lots held in common ownership now if at the time of recording it meets very specific requirements. It had, the lot had to have conformed with zoning at the time it was created, it had to have had not less than 10,000 square feet, so you have to have at least 10,000 square feet, and 75 feet of frontage, and it has to be located in a single-family residential zone. I know that sounds confusing, but I'll try to put it in a scenario. So if you have your house lot and you have a lot next door that you also own, so you own your house lot, you own the house next door, if that lot is at least 10,000 square feet and 75 feet of frontage, it does not meet our current zoning, you can still build on it under this new law. You just have to build a single-family residential home, it cannot be more than 1,850 square feet of heated living area, it can't contain less than three bedrooms, and it cannot be used as a short-term rental. So those, those are the new requirements. And I think that the purpose of it, of the thought was that it would promote the ability to build more starter homes.
Can I ask a question on that one, Jenny?
I will try to answer.
Yep. So, the first bullet says conform to then existing requirements... So, the first bullet says, "Conform to then-existing requirements of area frontage, width, yard, or depth." Is that an "and," so it has to meet all of those at the time of endorsement?
Yes.
And then meet everything else?
Yes.
So, if you have a lot that's ten thousand square feet next to you, if it was considered a non-buildable lot when you had the A&R endorsed, would it not be considered for protection?
If you have a non-buildable lot at the time...
Because say the zoning required lots to be twenty thousand square feet, and you had a ten thousand square foot lot when you, when you had it subdivided, so it didn't conform to the zoning in place at the time.
Right.
But it has more than ten thousand square feet. Does this first bullet say that it would not be protected?
If it conformed to the zoning requirements at the time.
But it didn't. If the zoning requirements were twenty thousand square feet at the time, now they're forty thousand square feet. But it's ten thousand square feet. The lot is ten thousand square feet.
Oh, okay, okay, then no. It need, it need, it's similar to, so right now, there's a requirement, and it, you have a lot that's protected if it's at least five thousand square feet and fifty foot of frontage, and that is the current requirement. That's not going away. This just adds an extra layer to that, essentially. So, if you have a lot, and it was not held in common ownership with any lots that are adjacent to it, and it's at least five thousand square feet, has at least fifty feet of frontage, and conformed to zoning at the time it was created, or it was created before zoning became what it is, then it's protected. We don't see many of those. You don't see many now, and I'm not sure we even have any ten thousand square foot lots in town. I have no idea. But if someone came to us, then the merger doctrine would not apply.
My question to get to the point is, I don't think we're going to see a ton of people coming between now and whenever this goes into effect, of trying to A&R an extra ten thousand square feet off of their lot to then be able to create a house, because that lot would not be conforming to zoning at this point. So, it would not be protected.
Right, it has to have existed previously.
Mark, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm not really concerned about somebody coming and doing this now. I'm concerned, I believe it was 1990, maybe earlier, that town changed from fifteen thousand square feet to fifty thousand square feet. So, there were multiple, many, many lots created under the fifteen thousand square-foot zoning that were held in common ownership and merged under the merger doctrine. Are all of those lots now potentially open for development because they met the zoning at the time?
If they meet these requirements, so it has to meet the requirements at the, at that time.
Well, they would have to meet the ten thousand square feet, because it was fifteen thousand square feet minimum.
Then potentially, yes.
But if those lots have merged, I don't understand how you could unmerge them.
This, the merger doctrine would not apply to certain lots, even if they're held in common ownership. So, you can have two different lots that are held by separate deeds.
I think what you're saying is if you have an A&R that dissolves that lot line to merge them into one lot.
Right.
You can't then have, you don't have the right then to have that lot back.
That's what I'm, what I'm saying.
But if you own, if you own two separate lots that still have the property line between them, that's what Jenny's talking about.
Exactly. But what I, Mark, you were saying that if, the change, but I don't think you can unmerge a lot once you've merged it.
But my concern is that the only reason that they were merged is because the town, or all of these towns, exercised the merger doctrine. The homeowners at the time didn't choose to merge them. The town merged these lots for them.
Yeah, but since they've been merged, I don't think you could unmerge.
But that's my question, like, if those lots were legal in 1975, right? And the town chose to merge them only because we exercise the merger doctrine, do those landowners now have a case to say, "I actually own three fifteen thousand square-foot parcels instead of one forty-five thousand square foot parcel?"
I would, so, I'm not an attorney. I do know a lot about the merger doctrine and zoning, but I would hesitate to answer these questions and, and go over these scenarios, just because I think it's on a case-by-case basis. And when we have someone come to us with a lot in question, Fred and I, you know, will meet with them and look over it and decide what applies. So, I think it's, it's really something that we need to get more information from, from, from legal counsel and, and look at as people come in, just the same we do when someone comes in with a five thousand square foot lot with fifty feet of frontage, which currently exists.
I just think that's a huge concern with this, this law, if that is actually allowable.
This is a law under 40A, so it's a state law.
Fred, do you have a comment on that?
Always welcome, Fred.
Fred Lennar, Community Development Director. So, Westboro's zoning bylaw actually goes back, and I don't have the, on official, official record of 49, but it goes back, for all intents and purposes of this conversation, to the 50s. So, there was an area requirement in the 50s in Westboro. I do believe it exceeded the ten thousand. It then, there was a substantial change in 1986 that Mark alluded to. It basically doubled the lot size. I think it was twenty-five thousand area in 86, and it went to fifty. And the frontage was a hundred and forty feet. It went to two hundred feet. So, but there was zoning prior in the 50s that required a lot area, so any of these lots would have to predate the 50s. To date, I've only known of two cases in Westboro, and one is actually built on in Westboro that had fifty foot and five thousand square feet. It's a very rare and odd lot. So, you're probably talking of less than a handful of these lots that actually would even exist in Westboro. So, the lot to conform to this would have to predate the 50s, basically, to eliminate, because it'd have to conform to that ten thousand square foot. We had zoning in the 50s that required more than that.
So, like ninety percent of the lots downtown?
Talking residential now. So, commercial could be different, too. That's, that's a valid point, albeit I think this is, this is only for residential, correct? This is only single...
You don't think ninety percent of downtown was built before 1950? Maybe seventy-five percent?
We're referring to residential lots.
Yeah, I'm referring to residential lots.
But how many, how many residential lots downtown are vacant?
Single-family. That's, I don't, that's an interesting question. I don't know that we have any vacant, single-family lots in downtown.
I'm not talking about vacant now, but if they were merged in 1996, whatever you said, if they were merged because they, the vacant lot, somebody back in 1930 bought two parcels, two lots that were recorded on a, a land plan somewhere. And they were both compliant with whatever zoning was in place in 1930, or no zoning, if that's...
There was no zoning, right.
Okay, but they bought two, even if it was 1975, right? And the zoning, minimum zoning was twenty-five thousand square feet. And somebody bought two parcels that complied to the twenty-five thousand square feet, and the town merged them because we exercised the merger doctrine. Does that homeowner now have the base to say, "Well, I bought two lots. It complied to zoning in 1975, so I should have two lots"?
Again, that's a legal question, as Jenny had alluded to. I don't know if you can, I don't think you can actually unmerge lots once they've been...
That was the point I was...
But I think, I think there's just confusion, because the, the merge, the merging is either taking a plan and dissolving that lot line to make it one lot, or having them still be two lots, but considered one.
Right.
If they are still two lots, and there's still a plan on record that has a lot line in between them, and both of those lots meet these criteria, then yes, that lot can be developed. If somebody filed a plan with the registry that dissolved that middle lot line, then no, they can't be re-unmerged, because they've already been combined into one lot.
Okay, and my fear, I guess, is... Whatever, I'm beating a dead horse at this point.
This, this is a higher level than, than us, because it's the state requirements, but just something to be aware of. And then the next thing is for zoning appeals. So, the requirement for standing just changed a little bit for who can appeal a decision from a local zoning determination through the Zoning Board of Appeals. It requires that the complainant, who is not the original applicant, appellant, or petitioner at the local level, must sufficiently allege and must plausibly demonstrate that measurable injury, et cetera. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but that's up to the judge. That, that's not up to us. And then another require, another change is that now a judge can require a plaintiff, so someone appealing a zoning decision, to post a bond of not more than two hundred fifty thousand, and previously, the limit was fifty thousand. So, that's just another change. But that's up to the judge, again, at a much higher level than, than for us to determine. And then another requirement, which is really great, is that the act also inserts a new allowance for a municipality to negotiate with a housing developer or a residential development owner to include a preference for affordable housing to be designated to veterans. So, there are requirements that must be in place for the municipality to be able to do that. And then the veteran preference can include up to ten percent of the affordable units in a development. So, that's a, that's a pretty good change.
So, do we have, do we have inclusionary zoning, incentive zoning, density bonus? I mean, do we have those things in place today? And also, if I read that, there's a lot of "or's" in there, so it's, it's, I'm just curious what the path is to make sure we're complying with this.
We do, we have inclusionary zoning, and I'll be talking more about that later. That's it for the House of Plan Bill.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah.
Were there any other questions by either board on this? I think there are a lot of unknowns to it, and I'm sure we will get more information as we get more information from the state, and also take a clarification on our own bylaws and look at them, and see how they fit in with this and our zoning regulations. And Jenny, you're going to tell us a little?
I will, yes, I, I'm going to talk a little, just a brief introduction on the Housing Production Plan, and then just introduce our consultant, Luke Mitchell, from VHB. So, I did send out the Housing Production Plan. I don't feel bad if you haven't read it. That's a very long document. So, Luke is here to just give a presentation to go over the high points of the Housing Production Plan. But essentially, just a little bit of a background. We started this work on the Housing Production Plan in about October, November of '23, and it was an offshoot of the Master Plan. So, we had hired VHB to help us with our Master Plan, which was completed, and they also had helped with some of the implementation priorities as well. And one of those items was to look at the additional affordable housing need in the community and further analyze that. So, that became the need for a Housing Production Plan. So, again, the Master Plan had identified the need for additional affordable housing in the community, and the research needed to be done to really determine what types of affordable housing that we need, based on the current demographics and other factors. And we also knew from the public outreach that was done during the Master Plan, during the Downtown Plan, and then further in the Housing Production Plan, kind of what we needed in terms of senior housing, you know, housing for young families, smaller rentals to be available. But the Housing Production Plan really gives us an in-depth look at what we need in Westboro, based on all of those factors. So, the Housing Production Plan was really a natural segue from the Master Plan. And with that, I will hand it over to Luke to present an overview of the final plan. You can talk here? Yeah.
Just, you don't have another? I think the USB C input.
I can also put it on my screen.
Is yes, if you need some extra? I've sent, I sent you one that was version two.
Yeah, but I can't, but it's, I think you're over, worried about something that we're not going to...
I think that works, thank you.
Maybe, yeah.
No, I, I just, I...
Nice big screen. Hi, everybody. I'm Luke Mitchell from VHB. Thank you for inviting me to present tonight. So, I, I lead the land planning, sorry, I lead the land planning team in Massachusetts for VHB. We always love any opportunity to work here in Westboro. I played a small part in pulling together the Master Plan a few years ago. And as Jenny mentioned, this really came out of that effort. Of course, like any other Master Plan, there was a chapter on housing, and that was our, our first, first look. And then this got a little bit more into the details. It's still, to a degree, to a degree, a high-level planning exercise, but it's a little more in-depth than the chapter from the Master Plan.
Can we, can we, we're having like a strong effect...
Oh, boy. Yeah, let me try a different part.
Page one. Only.
I have one more report, which I can try. Maybe Jenny, if you could, you have it queued up. Might be the best thing to do. Okay, tentatively, that looks okay. So, yeah, really interesting, Jenny, listening to your presentation on the, oh, it's happening again. Jenny, if you could just go ahead and present, sorry. Thanks anyways. So, as she queues that up, housing is, of course, a really timely topic right now. I think it was an opportune moment to move forward with the Housing Production Plan, especially given statewide, nationwide, really, the focus on housing and proliferating the availability of affordable units to sort of meet the demands of this housing crisis that we find ourselves in. So, basically, as an agenda for, for my slide deck, I can talk a little bit about the planning context. Many of you probably already know some of it, but just as a refresher and to build the context, walk quickly through a needs assessment, which was based on some demographic analysis and looking at the existing housing inventory in town, and then get into the goals that we recommend in the Housing Production Plan. Next, thanks. So, in terms of planning context, so as you know, Westboro is located at this great crossroads of I-495 and the Mass Pike and Route 9, and for those reasons, and just because it's in Metro West, you have a really strong demand for housing in the region and in town. So, this is certainly reflected in the, in the high cost of homes here. I have some data that I can present in a little bit. I have some data that I can present in a little bit. But those prices have progressively gone up over time. So this slide presents a high-level overview of some planning exercises and things that have happened over the past four years. In 2020, the town prepared an affordable housing analysis and action plan and established the Affordable Housing Trust, which was a big step forward. In 2021, we prepared the master plan. In 2023, the town explored the, the needs of older adults specifically, including with regards to housing. In 2024, with the 3A legislation that came out about the MBTA communities, the town introduced a new byright multifamily zoning district. And also, I believe it was in 2024, was when the sewer moratorium was introduced, limiting the introduction of new housing due to constrained infrastructural conditions, which has obviously had a big impact on the housing market. I've got the next slide. So looking at population change over the past century or so, we can see that the population's grown steadily since 1930. Between 2010 and 2020, for instance, you had a surge of around 2,500 people, so really a major increase. It's anticipated that although the pace of growth will slow, the population will continue to increase in the future with obvious impact on the need for additional housing. If you go to the next slide. This chart showing the change in households in Westboro, it tells an important story. As you can see, the number of households increased by about 1,000 between 2010 and 2020. But if you note the red, yellow, and orange lines down below, this growth was fueled almost entirely by households consisting of two or more adults with no children, represented by the red line. And looking ahead to projected conditions in future decades, it's anticipated that this growth will continue to be fueled by households like that as well as householders with a single person living alone. So meanwhile, households with children anticipated to stay relatively constant, even dipping in the future. So these shifts may appear subtle on the chart, but really, when you think about it, it's hundreds of households. And even as the, the number of household increase is slowing, those demographic shifts mean that you have changing housing needs. And it emphasizes the importance of needing to keep up with those, with those needs. Next slide, quick look at income. This graph compares Westboro with some of the neighboring communities as well as Massachusetts and the United States as a whole. While Westboro is lower than many of the neighboring communities, certainly higher than the statewide median and nationwide median. Next slide, despite the high levels of household income, this slide speaks to the amount of cost-burdened households. So cost-burdened is a measure that the Federal Housing and Urban Development Agency has defined. And basically, if, if the household is paying more than 30% of their income on housing costs, then they are cost-burdened, sorry, cost-burdened. And there's varying levels of that. But as you can see here, looking at the bottom two bars, that's 30% or more. 19% of owner-occupied households are paying more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And close to 40% of renter-occupied households are paying more than 30% of their income on housing costs. So it just goes to emphasize that even given the high levels of median household income, people are still, you know, feeling, feeling the cost of housing. Next slide. With regard to tenancy, in other words, the breakdown between owners and renters, here's some comparative data. Owner households are in blue, renter households are in red. It's really striking. You can see that Westboro is the fourth from left. It's got a higher prevalence of renter households than any of the neighboring communities as well as Massachusetts as a whole and the, and the U.S. as a whole. Many housing production plans that we've come across focus on increasing the supply of renter housing because there's often not enough of that. There is a lot of renter housing here in Westboro, which is a good thing. But it's interesting to note. Next slide, please. So during our process, we toured the community with Jenny and a few others. We met with stakeholders here in this room and had some great conversations. And we did a lot of research online. And this list here is a, is a summary of some of the most pressing housing issues that we were able to identify ourselves through our research and also that we were made aware of in our conversations with the community. So first, one thing that came up in the stakeholder interviews is that, I think the comment was, "All housing types have become unaffordable." You know, that might be hyperbole to say that all of them, but the point that the person was making was that no matter what your income, there's a lot of people who, for whom housing has become too expensive. Second, renting, and connected to the first one, renting no longer significantly more affordable than making mortgage payments, which has a lot of impact on different groups. Third, there's a notable lack of Spaller starter homes. Fourth, we heard a lot about people who grow up in Westboro struggle to be able to come, to move back and find a house that they can rent or buy. Next, there is, there is land zoned for multifamily housing, obviously, in Westboro. But it's become more and more rare with each project. So there is a perception that, you know, there's, there's fewer parcels available to support large, sort of transformative projects that can really make an impact. Next, the downtown area is underutilized. And the sentiment there was that there are a lot of places in the downtown core that, that aren't really the highest and best use of the parcels. You find surface parking lots, gas stations, things like that that could be occupied by mixed-use residential projects. Next, there's a lack of compelling incentives to encourage affordable housing. The idea there is that, you know, zoning can allow for residential development, but it can also encourage certain types of residential development. So that was lacking, according to some folks we spoke with. Next, residential development has strained infrastructure. And things that have come up were sewers, schools, and public safety. In terms of the sewer, you know, clearly that, that capacity has been strained. In terms of schools and public safety, that was the perception we heard from some. But, you know, we really looked at a lot of the different multifamily projects that have been built over the past 14 years or so. What we found was that most of them had smaller units, and many of the folks that had moved in weren't moving in with children. So the impact on schools is, really, it varies by project, but it's not uniformly a large impact on the schools, I guess I would say. Next slide. Thanks. So, okay. After we did our research, what, what we did was we articulated five housing goals. And if you get a chance to review the housing production plan, each of these goals is accompanied by a series of actions that can be carried out to help advance the goals. So we can go through each of these one at a time. If you go to the next slide, Jenny. First goal is to identify underutilized and vacant properties that could be used to support residential development and to respond to the town's housing needs. This really came out of the idea that, you know, there's so few large parcels left to develop, right? So I think the idea is, well, you know, while some of the large greenfield sites may have been developed, what else is out there in terms of, yes, vacant parcels, but also parcels that aren't the highest and best use, that are underdeveloped, or sorry, underutilized, that could potentially be redeveloped as residential assets? The actions that we outlined for this goal really focus on specific geographies in town. First is the downtown core, which I mentioned. There's several prominent sites in the downtown that could, that could really support some nice mixed-use, larger or midsize residential projects. This is currently being explored in the downtown development plan, which is complete now or almost? Okay. So I haven't read that report yet. Look forward to reading it. But our team certainly feels that the downtown would be a great place to develop new housing for the sake of adaptive reuse, preserving some of the historic character, as well as activating the downtown and really taking advantage of the mixed-use condition. Second are the, some of the major corridors in town, specifically Route 9, 30, and 135. There's already significant residential development along some of these. But the action here would really be to maybe in a more strategic, targeted way sort of do corridor studies along these corridors and identify where the, where the real development opportunities are situated, possibly with the involvement of the Affordable Housing Trust. Third is transit hubs. So, you know, we visited the commuter rail station in the surrounding area, located next to the reservoir. There have been some really cool housing projects there, including the project that we visited on Donia Drive and as well as Westboro Village. You know, there's really been a significant amount of housing built in that area. So what's left, what, what spots are left near the transit station that could be developed, I think is an important question that could be explored further, sort of in concert with looking at the zoning of the transit-oriented village zoning that you have in place for those, for that location. So yeah, the 495 Metro West Development Compact Plan is a study that was completed in 2017, more of a regional study, large effort that identified some locations locally that could be referenced and emphasized. If you go to the next slide, Jenny. Thank you. Second goal is to dive into the zoning bylaws and update the approach to regulating land uses. There are already some great things about your zoning. You have some overlay districts in town, downtown planning overlay district, which has an affordable housing requirement, if I'm, if I'm not wrong, of 20% of the units. The senior overlay district focusing on the, on the residential needs of older adults. Transit-oriented village, which I mentioned. But, you know, the zoning bylaws could be further improved, as, as most zoning bylaws can be. So I think definitely worth the exercise of revisiting how the zoning is treating residential development currently. Some examples of that, dimensional requirements in the single, single-family residential district could be revisited in terms of setbacks and bulk requirements. And to the discussion earlier, how much of the lot can be occupied? I think it's a question worthy of exploring further. Is, is it overly restrictive? Could it be loosened up? You know, the, the fact that the restrictions on ADUs are going to be loosened up statewide, in my opinion, is a real good step forward in terms of enabling people to do things with the properties they own. So maybe locally, taking a look at how those single-family lots are governed and controlled, I think would be worth the effort. Also, incentive zoning, as I mentioned. There's a lot of municipalities around the state that have been introducing more incentive zoning. For example, to encourage affordable housing. Incentive zoning can be used to encourage all sorts of things. But increasing the amount of affordable units is one of those things. Restricting short-term rentals in town is another measure that has been more and more popular across the state. So considering that, it helps to mitigate the, the housing shortage. Revisiting requirements for affordable units in each district and how specific they are. You know, there's different tranches of affordable housing from, based on the area median income. And really, if you can make sure that those requirements are hitting different categories, very low income, low-income housing, workforce housing, would, would be an improvement. And then next, sorry. And then lastly, ADUs. Everything's changing with regard to ADUs. I think we, we were writing this plan at a, at a moment of transition with, with the way that the state allows towns to regulate housing. So this one may very well become obsolete with the, the passing of those laws. Next slide. So third goal is to leverage state funds to support a diverse array of housing options. Obviously, there's, there's a whole host of programs that the state provides to support housing development. And I think most importantly is the first bullet point here is to focus on partnerships between the town, the housing authority, the Affordable Housing Trust, and Mass Housing Finance Agency, Mass Housing Partnership, and Housing in Livable Communities. Those are three of the public and quasi-public agencies that control these programs. And only in close communication with, with those agencies can you really start to craft a strategy for making sure that the developers who develop here have the information they need to access programs like that. And just a few examples are CPA funding, community-based housing program supports, supportive housing. And then, of course, historic tax credits, you know, mostly in relation to the downtown core. But those are just three programs. There's, there's a whole host of other programs. And there are new tax credits and programs that were baked into the Affordable Homes Act that Jenny mentioned that should be explored. Next is to prioritize housing that advances regional economic development goals. So the idea here is that, you know, the most effective housing strategy is strategy that can be used to support businesses, both existing and new businesses, and make sure that the town is in close communication with regional business leaders and business associations to find out what those housing needs might be. And that can certainly have an impact on land use regulation and zoning and things like that to make sure that the, the town is doing what it can to support the idea that there'll be sufficient housing to house the workforce of growing businesses. And of course, the, I think, at a more abstract level, that will help to distribute the tax burden more evenly between residential and commercial properties. Lastly, if you go to the next slide, Jenny, is to work to ensure that local infrastructure enables, rather than limits, new housing production. So first step to that is to finalize the sewer capacity study, if it hasn't been finalized yet. But then, once that's complete, take a look at it, cross-reference it with, with the housing production plan, and really come up with ways or consider policies that give a preferential allocation of infrastructural resources, water, wastewater, to support the affordable housing that's so badly needed in town. In other words, take steps to, you know, to expand. In other words, take steps to, you know, to expand and improve upon the infrastructure, but in the case where it's going to be limited, anything that you can do to make sure that that support is given to those properties. And then, lastly, this came out of dialogue that we had with the town, updating the requirements for site plan review to mandate that applicants perform, you know, detailed impact assessment so that the town can have, you know, empirical understanding, if possible, of the amount of need for infrastructure that's going to be coming online and they can plan ahead and plan for investments in that infrastructure. So that, thank you so much. I know there was a lot in there, but happy to discuss any of those points with you guys.
Is there anybody on the board that has any questions at this time? Or I'm sure we can discuss this further with our, among the board members. Our first chance to see it, I think, some of us. But are there any particular questions? Did you have Mr. Mitchell?
I'm going to hold off. I don't have any particular questions, but just thank you for the presentation.
Any one on the board of select that might have some questions? Patrick?
I'll just say thank you very much for the presentation, very thorough. I appreciate the work put into this. Is this being, I'm sorry if you said this, is this going to be published on the town's website so we can access it? Terrific. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. Appreciate. Thank you. All right, Jenny, you're going to use a short presentation on the Planning Department articles and Planning Board for the de facto reading.
I'll start with the inclusionary zoning bylaw, since we're on the housing topic. Get this up.
Public hearing?
No.
Yeah, so this is just-
Our public hearing is being held on the 17th.
Yes. So this is information for the Select Board and the Planning Board while they're here. So this is a proposal to have a separate inclusionary zoning bylaw. And before I get into really what we're looking at doing in the bylaw, I'm just going to go over what is inclusionary zoning for everyone here, although I'm sure you're familiar with it, but really for the public. So inclusionary zoning means that there's a local initiative that requires a portion of the housing units in a new development be preserved for affordable housing. So an example would be in Westboro, in many places, we have a 20% affordability requirement. So the 20% affordability requirement applying to a 20-dwelling unit development would be required to have four units designated as affordable housing, and the rest of the units, the 16 units, would be designated as market-rate units. Who qualifies for affordable housing? So the low-income household is defined as a percentage of the area median income, which I'll go over on the next slide of what that is for Westboro. And the HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, sets those income limits for Massachusetts, along with other states, of course. And currently, it's up to 80% of the area median income for the affordable housing. What is an affordable unit? So the rent, if it's less than or equal to 30% of your gross income, that's considered affordable. Luke had gone over, you know, what it means to be cost-burdened, and that's where you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing. So an affordable is considered if you'll be able to be spending less than the 30%. So these are the income limits according to the HUD for fiscal year 2024. So there's varying levels. There's 50% of the area median income, there's 30%, and then there's 80% of the area median income, which is what we typically see when we have affordable units as part of a development. So for a family of four, their income could not be more than $97,800 annually. And the median family income is up here, $127,700. Why do we need an inclusionary zoning? Well, Chapter 40B of Mass General Law does require that all cities and towns in Massachusetts have 10% of the total housing stock designated as affordable. And then, as we all know, communities that do not have that 10% affordable housing stock are subject to comprehensive permit filings, also known as 40Bs. This new development widens the gap between the total housing stock and the 10%. And the inclusionary zoning is intended to prevent the further deficit in affordable housing. In Westboro, we are thankfully over that 10% threshold. We have many affordable units. As of the 2020 census, we had 975 total on the subsidized housing inventory. So we are a little under 12% for our SHI. But currently in Westboro, we require a 10% to 20% affordability component for all residential development, depending on what type of residential development you're doing. This applies to open space subdivisions, transit-oriented village development, senior living overlay developments, and then highway business multifamily development. So what is new about this bylaw? Because we currently do have inclusionary zoning requirements in our bylaw, but it is within each of those residential sections. So each residential section sort of has a different requirement. So this bylaw combines all of the affordability requirements into one bylaw for consistency. So all of the other sections would reference this bylaw. This also adds a 10-unit minimum threshold to trigger the affordability component. We do not have a minimum unit threshold in the bylaw currently, which can be an issue for smaller developers, especially when they're looking at building affordable homes, that the project may not be financially feasible if they're required to put in affordable units. And that 10-unit minimum threshold came from the economic feasibility analysis that we did as part of the MBTA zoning. So that kind of told us that that 10-unit minimum is a comfortable area for developers and for the town. The bylaw will require additional levels of affordability to capture additional income levels. Right now, it's only, we require up to 80% of area median income in the bylaw, so this would allow for a range of between 50% to 110% of the area median income. And then it also adds in a requirement of local preference for all rentals, sales, and resales to, not necessarily in this order, but current residents, employees of businesses in town, town of Westboro employees, and veterans. Currently, the Planning Board does add that as a condition to Planning Board decisions for any affordable units to have that preference, if allowed by EOHLC, the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. But this puts it in the bylaw as a requirement. It also adds a requirement for 25% of the affordable units to be ADA compliant. So the affordability requirements are proposed to be divided into two tiers based on the level of affordability. And again, the economic feasibility analysis helped us to understand the impact on the cost to developers when constructing a project. It costs more to a development to construct a unit that has a lower AMI because of the return in rent or the sale. It may work well in a larger project to require a lower affordability requirement, but on smaller projects, the numbers just aren't financially feasible, and we may not get those projects, and we would lose out on that much-needed housing. Also, our recent housing production plan and the downtown plan showed the demographics that explain the need for lower rental prices, but also the need for more affordable units that may be more than the typical 80% AMI. As you saw on that chart on a couple slides ago, that the 80% AMI for a family of four was $97,800. But there are households that could be making a little bit more of that, and they wouldn't necessarily qualify for the affordable housing. But based on the market in Westboro, the need is there. They cannot necessarily afford what is on the market. So this breakdown, I think, represents the actual need in Westboro for affordable housing. It doesn't reflect just us wanting to get housing on the SHI. So the Tier 1 represents middle-income units to households with annual gross incomes greater than 80% AMI but below 110% AMI. And then for rental projects, the AMI cannot average any more than 65%, or a developer could divide it equally between 50% and 80% AMI. A developer can also contribute payment in lieu of onsite units. So we would rather not see this. In talks with the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, we have found that financially, it's just not as productive for the town to have the funding to construct the units. It's much more productive for the town to have the developer construct the units. So this request must be made through a special permit from the Planning Board, and the Planning Board would have to find that there is an unusual net benefit to achieve the town's housing objectives by allowing a payment. And the findings would need to include the current balance of the Affordable Housing Trust and then the town's current SHI, meaning that if we felt like, you know, we were well above what we needed for our SHI, we, you know, may not be as concerned as having the units immediately built. And then the Planning Board can decide where to designate the funds to. So it may not be the Affordable Housing Trust fund. It could be the Senior Disabled Tax Relief Fund or any number of other areas. So why is this, why do we need to change this? Well, the big thing is to allow for consistency in the bylaw currently. It's not consistent throughout the bylaw in the different places. And by making this change, it will encourage more mixed-income housing developments with these affordable units, because it broadens that affordability requirement. The master plan talked about providing for the creation and preservation of affordable housing units for low- and moderate-income households, so it definitely checks that box. Our economic feasibility analysis provided the information for the macroeconomic conditions that have a big impact on feasibility of construction for developers. And then, of course, we had our community needs assessment, which provided information related to the need for more accessible and affordable housing options. And then, lastly, as we were just talking about, the housing production plan, it was recommended to diversify the affordable housing requirements to reflect the current need in Westboro. Thank you, and I am here to answer any questions.
I think we have to save any questions until the public hearing, which is held on the 17th. But if anyone would like clarification, I'm sure they can contact Jenny and get it. But thank you for the presentation. Is there anything else before the Planning Board?
Is there reason we can't have the boards ask questions now?
Excuse me?
I thought the purpose of this meeting was to prevent this from having to be presented separately to the Planning Board and the Select Board, where the Select Board would have had an opportunity to ask questions.
Oh, I thought this was just an information center. My understanding was that because it's Election Day, we really, and since we're having the presentation of the meeting on the 17th, that this was really just an information schedule tonight. I may begin. Patrick, your thoughts?
I fully expected people to be able to ask questions. I wasn't thinking that it was just information only. But certainly in the public hearing, I would encourage all the public to come out and ask questions in that session as well, but.
I can clarify also, Hazel. So, yes, we cannot have a public hearing, but we were advised by Town Council that we can have the public meeting and the boards can ask questions, but there's no formal votes or anything like that. So they were comfortable with allowing for comment from the boards.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but this is not the public hearing. The public hearing, as you said, would be on September 17th.
Okay. All right, Patrick, it's up to you and your board if you, any questions? Are there any? I'm going to hold my questions quite frankly to the public hearing. I like to digest it, so before I ask any questions.
Hi. We, the Select Board typically invites the Director of Planning to a separate meeting. So I think the purpose of these presentations tonight was to avoid her having to come back to a Select Board meeting. So I think that we had hoped that the board would be able to ask questions, because they need to vote on whether or not they support the articles for the warrant.
So, yeah, I would open it up to the board to ask any questions they may have. Okay. I've got a few. I'll keep it quick. In Section C1, the bylaw starts at 10 units, and that was based on the financial feasibility assessment. General knowledge, if you have zoning and it's not financially feasible, the developer can appeal and get a ruling that bypasses the requirement. My question is, do the assessment, would the assessment support making that eight units? Because at the 15%, you'd get one of eight instead of one of 10 at the starting point.
Currently, the analysis looked at the minimum threshold of being 10 units, and that's what it did its analysis based on. But I think, you know, there's definitely other factors that you could look at and take into consideration through feedback from developers. But that was where the 10 came from.
Okay. Thank you. Section D1, where we have the two tiers for affordable and moderate income, the Tier 2 doesn't count towards SHI.
Correct.
HLC currently defines moderate-income housing as 80% to 120% AMI. Was the reasoning behind limiting it at 110?
The, it was what was in the housing production plan and what we had talked about, but I don't see any downside to allowing up to 120%. I think it's also up to the Planning Board to offer that feedback as well.
So in D2, the average of 85, I'm sorry, the average of 65% AMI pretty much mandates a 50%, 80% AMI split for housing developments. I guess I'm a little concerned that developers could come in and say that's not economically feasible. We've, the Housing Trust has actually been negotiating with a developer to increase their affordable housing component from 20% to 25, with that extra 5% being its 60%. And they're having trouble making the numbers work. And so, even with a subsidy. So I'm wondering if setting that threshold at 70% as the average might be more reasonable? That would still mean a third of the units were at 50% AMI or a higher percentage at 60.
Where are you again? I'm sorry.
This is, this is in Section D5 in the document. It goes to the split between 80% and 50% AMI units.
So I think that's a good comment. We can certainly look at making that change. I am aware of the project you're talking about, of course. I think the thought was with the lowers that the percentage required was at 15% instead of 20, so hopefully that would kind of help offset that cost to the developer, but that's certainly valuable feedback.
Yeah, I'm just worried that a developer's going to come in and have a plan rejected and then go to court and say that, that ruling, you know, for their development, 65% average, isn't workable, and the court will say, you know, basically do what you want. And then we're left not really meeting our goals. And then we're left not really meeting our goals. For section E two, the financial mitigation, I think, is very strong. Just for reference, if it could be clarified that it's a family afford the eighty percent AMI level is the basis of the calculation, in 2024 HUD numbers, that would mean it would be a hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred dollars per unit if someone was going to negotiate funds instead of units to negotiate the percentage now. That is a reasonable amount right now to, for the Housing Trust or another entity to replace that unit from a subsidy and development standpoint. So that, that was cool. And then the last comment is a technical one, F three. It talks about guaranteeing that the town has right of first refusal. I'm going to ask that that be changed just to a right of refusal. What we're seeing in current deed restrictions and the ones we've negotiated and signed with HLC is they're written as a right of refusal so that if it's first refusal, they won't market the property till the town says yes or no, and then they go market the property. If then they can't find a buyer, we really have no mechanism to step in and make the purchase. If it's right of refusal, they can market the property immediately, and if they're unable to find an eligible buyer within the time period, then we can step it, step in and purchase the property and maintain it, effectively buy it, flip it, immediately re-market it for an eligible family. And this would minimize the risk that an, an SHI unit goes to an ineligible buyer or ineligible renter for a period of time.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that was it.
So, yeah, to, to follow up to Alan's thing, I don't know if the Affordable Housing Trust is going to look at this and give memo to the planning board, but I think that would be really helpful since you guys are on the ground and kind of with all these comments, really digging in, having that information for us at the hearing would be really helpful.
Okay.
I will be presenting to them, I think, next week, I want to say, at their meeting on Thursday. I'm asking for their support.
Okay. That was it, thank you.
Is the goal of the inclusionary zoning bylaw change to increase rental occup, ownership or both of affordable units?
I think both. It, it would apply to rental and ownership. So there, when a developer comes in, I mean, they have it set what they're going to be doing, whether it be a rental project or a homeownership project, because the cost to them is, is different. But these requirements would apply to either.
I guess, and my memory may not serve me well, it feels like in recent years, in just ballpark, you know, I don't know, maybe four, four years historical, it feels like the development, the residential development projects that we've seen here in Westboro are largely rental. And again, I'm just, I'm not saying by percent or what have you, but it feels like that's kind of been more the trend. We obviously saw the number that Luke put up in terms of how Westboro is positioned in terms of rental versus ownership. So I, I guess I'm just, I'm not sure how this sort of plays out long-term is where I'm going, based on kind of availability of land, the economics of development, what you can actually put on a property, single versus multifamily versus rental and ownership. So it's really, it's really just a kind of comment out there. It's not a position or, or any, anything more than a question.
I can move on to the next, oh, okay.
Sorry, I just asked one question, and Alan, you might know it too, pardon my ignorance, but right now, back to the rental question, my understanding is it, is it twenty or like twenty or twenty-five percent of rental is affordable, then a hundred percent of the development is considered affordable for SHI?
Yes, so it's twenty-five percent at eighty percent, up to eighty percent AMI if you have that on a rental project, then one hundred percent of the units are counted towards your SHI or twenty percent of the units of up to sixty percent AMI. And then one hundred percent would be affordable.
And so with this, so with this now, it's, from a zoning perspective, only fifteen percent will be required to be at that eighty percent or below, five percent at the one hundred and ten, which wouldn't qualify. Is that accurate?
That, that would be accurate. So it would be, so under our current inclusionary zoning requirements, we only require twenty percent.
Right. Then it's kind of negotiation to go to twenty-five sometimes.
Right, we have been working with the Affordable Housing Trust to provide that additional subsidy to the developer so that they're able to get up to that twenty-five percent. But without that subsidy, it's not financially feasible for developers.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from your board on this? Otherwise, thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
For your presentation. I don't think there's anything else to come before the planning board tonight.
We have one more zoning article.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then you'll be done with me.
Thought we were done.
And so this next zoning article is about the highway business district development. So it would replace the existing section six point two in the zoning bylaw. So this map just shows you where the highway business district is. It runs along Route nine, starting at the town line for Northboro, and then ends at the intersection of Connector Road and Route nine, where it goes into mostly industrial This shows what uses are currently allowed in the highway business zoning district, either by right or by special permit, and then just an overview of the dimensional controls. But here, we'll, we'll really have a focus on the open space requirement, which in Westboro is sixty percent for that zoning district specifically. Compared to other towns and their similar zoning districts for highway business zoning or other commercial zoning districts, you can see that Westboro is much higher. I, I did not do the math to see the average, but I would, I would say it's about thirty percent or so. Most towns either don't have a requirement for their commercial zoning district for that open space, or the requirement is at twenty percent. So currently, section six point two only applies to multifamily development in the highway business zoning district. And then through a special permit for that multifamily use, the applicant can request a waiver to the dimensional parking and sign requirements, and that dimensional, dimensional does include the open space. The revised bylaw will allow for this flexibility for all types of development through a special permit from the planning board. There's also additional height and setback flexibility to accommodate sustainable features such as solar energy storage, and it also adds additional parking requirements to accommodate bicycle parking. As many of you know, we have the Be Walt Trail that runs through a lot of that area. So this just adds on that requirement for any businesses to also add bicycle parking to their development. And then it kind of clarifies and adds the option for an open space reduction in exchange for other public benefits. So the open space reduction for the, the public benefits would be done through a special permit in exchange for what I call a public benefit amenity. That can be a few different things. It can be a donation of undeveloped land to the town, a sustainable design in the development, or a, a contribution of a fee or a, a combination. So the exchange would be calculated through a point system. A project coming in can earn up to twelve points. The open space requirement would not be able to be reduced below thirty percent of the total lot size, and a development can choose multiple items, and I'll go over those in a minute, to be able to achieve those points. And then the planning board will establish regulations for this point system and eligible options. And the reason for this was that we wanted to make sure that we would be able to change any of the sustainable design requirements without necessarily having, having to go through a town meeting if things became not relevant, such as solar panels. Not saying those are going out, but it, it's just easier for those changes to be made. So developer coming in, if they wanted to reduce their open space requirement, they could donate land to the town, and the number of points is based on the square footage of the reduction in the open space requirement. So if a developer had a hundred thousand square foot lot they wanted to develop and they wanted to have an only thirty percent open space requirement, they would need to provide a parcel that was equal to or greater than thirty thousand square feet, and then they would be entitled to that twelve points to get that reduction. And then the undeveloped land must be transferred to the town of Westboro or nonprofit organizations such as the Westboro Land Trust, which would be up to the, the planning board to decide where it get, it goes to depending on other factors.
Jenny, can I ask a question?
Yep.
That thirty percent, is that thirty percent that they're looking to go to for open space or the thirty percent that they're not looking to have on the site?
Thirty percent that they're, of the site. So the thirty percent that they are gaining for their development project.
So they're trying, yeah, so they're basically trying to move the thirty percent off their site and put it somewhere else versus the thirty percent that they're leaving on the site?
Correct.
Got it.
Good question. So they can also get points for sustainable design, which was really the crux of this bylaw and, and that we wanted to promote sustainability in the town as it aligns with the Climate Action Plan and the master plan, and this was a, a way to do it. So when we're talking about sustainable design features, we're talking about permanent elements in the development that improve the environmental performance, conserve resources, promote renewable energy, and then provides benefits to the, to the town and the developer for energy efficiency, water conservation, and, and just better air quality. So there's many different sustainable design options. We, the zoning working group and myself have been working with our sustainability coordinator and Sustainable Westboro to come up with what these design options could be. So there's many options for a developer to choose from to meet sustainable design threshold to be able to accumulate those points. And then the planning board will also have the discretion to review any proposed sustainable design features that are not included because technology is always improving, so they might have something that we don't have on the list. So just a couple of examples here, the points for the LEED certification is based on the type of certification. So the range you see here reflects the different levels of LEED certification. So twelve p, twelve points would be for LEED Platinum certification, eight would be for gold, and four would be for silver. And then just one more example, for the hers rating, they would be able to achieve that twelve points if the building can achieve a rating that is ten percent lower than the threshold specified by the energy code, which is a pretty substantial ask for, for a developer. There's many other things, too, and a developer coming in could also, you know, choose more than one thing. They could do EV charging stations, but then also a green roof. So it really helps that sustainability component. So why do we want a sustainable design? It's good for the town, it's good for the developer, it enhances environmental and health impact, it advances the town's sustainability goals as outlined in the Climate Action Plan and the Master Plan, it future proves development, it's the maximize use of the land, and then, of course, those financial and strategic benefits as well. So the last option, a developer can also contribute a fee in lieu of making those improvements. And this, we came up with this calculation method, looking at all sorts of different factors, but if they want to contribute to a green revenue account to fund projects, they would only be allowed to get a maximum of eight points for that, so they wouldn't be able to get to the maximum reduction. And then there's a payment calculation that you can see here. So the example is for a hundred thousand square foot lot that wanted the full twelve points, they would need to pay out three hundred, three hundred and sixty thousand. I just realized that I said the maximum was eight, but this was written before that.
Yes, my question is, can they actually get to that calculation?
No, they cannot. So I'll have to redo my math. What is it?
So eight would be two hundred and forty.
Thank you.
Yep.
So it should be two hundred and forty thousand. We would not prefer them to pay out of it. We would much rather have the land or the con, or the sustainable design elements, but we do recognize that some developers may want that option. And then this green revenue account, which is something that the select board would dictate where those funds go through, there's a new section of Mass General Law which allows for the select board to provide guidelines for an account without going through a town meeting each time to spend funds out of it. So that would be something that we would need to talk about through the select board. In my last slide, why, why are we doing this? Why do we need to allow for zoning flexibility? The current open space requirements in the highway business zoning district really have not yielded the desired results or the benefits of open space. We see a lot of car dealerships and other types of uses where you have large parking lots, and to accommodate for the open space, they usually put in grass medians throughout their parking lot. So it doesn't really allow for creative design with multiple uses, which is something that we would want. So the current, the current requirements kind of lock the applicant into a specific design because they're held to that sixty percent, but by allowing them to have the flexibility in the dimensional requirements and the open space, it can allow for a more creative design. Essentially, it's a win-win scenario for the municipalities and developers when you allow for that. There's, there's lots of economic benefits, and this was a recommendation in the master plan that we ensure the town's policies promote success across its diverse market sectors, including Route nine, that we highlight Route nine as a business-friendly environment, make it more pedestrian cyclist-friendly, of course, and then promote sustainability in new developments. So that's essentially why we are doing that. And I will just say quickly on the, I forgot to mention the public input side of it, this was sent out to multiple developers in the area that we see commonly that come in and develop, and so we did receive a lot of feedback from them on this, and we did make some changes as this draft progressed based on that feedback.
Mark, did you have a question?
I did. On the open space donation, is there, I, you know, there's a fairly large swamp in town that I want, is there a contingency that the parcel be listed in the open space plan as a parcel of interest, or could somebody just go by thirty thousand square feet of swamp and claim that that was the donation?
The planning board would have to decide whether to accept it. It would be similar to the requirements in the TOV zoning district where if they want a higher density, they have to provide a sending parcel, but it's up to the planning board to determine whether that parcel is essentially worthy of the reduction.
Are there any questions, Patrick?
Yeah, on that same vein, I was just curious, does the planning board also, would they have the authority to reject that, that change? So for example, if they didn't want that thirty thousand square feet offsite, but they contested it, said we still want that on the main property where you're building, does the planning board have the authority to reject that donation?
They, well, it's a special permit, so they would be able, if they found that it did not meet the requirements of the findings in the bylaw, which are listed in that draft bylaw, then they could reject it.
So simply offering it doesn't guarantee that the applicant would receive So simply offering it doesn't guarantee that the applicant would receive it?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a quick question on the sustainability piece, the one, there was one at the bottom for two points for stormwater recharge, management recharge, and rainwater collection. Isn't that already required now for developments?
That is a good question. I can see if our sustainability coordinator can answer that. Oh, you have to come up.
The reason I'm asking is just the question, do we give them points for something we're already requiring them to?
So Ben can talk more about what this requirement would mean, but these are all requirements that are kind of above and beyond our existing requirements. But he can talk more about what this specifically means.
Yeah, I mean, Benjamin Bowers, Sustainability Coordinator, I mean, I would say off the top of my head, when building these sustainable design features, I really focused on looking at other bylaws in other towns that had similar features and trying to make them much more strict than, than what would traditionally be included in zoning. So I, off the top of my head, I can't read through, through what we have in the, the stormwater management, but I would say it's definitely more strict than, than was currently in the bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah, and my impression of that was that they're going to be recycling the rainwater for other uses.
I saw the rainwater collection, which I think is different, the management recharge.
Which is a little more stringent than what is in our-
Typical recharge.
And another point on that is, since these are going to be in the regulations, planning board just has to hold a hearing to change them. So if we find things that are redundant, we can change them throughout, without going to town meeting.
Just a question, and I think this applies to several of these features, taking green roofs as an example, four points for that. If, if the applicant has, let's say, more than one building on, on the lot that they're building, or it's of significant size, do they have an opportunity to increase the number of points that they would be able to, to take advantage of?
Yeah, so these are, in the regulations, they're recommended points essentially of the minimum threshold, but in, in the bylaw does describe that the planning board has the discretion to give, provide more points, or less points if, if they feel like it, it kind of fits, but not, not necessarily what we're looking for.
Flexibility there.
Yes, it allows for that flexibility.
Just, one of the reasons I like this, and specific example is the Cold Harbor, right? Cold Harbor was maxed out on their open space, and we couldn't give them any flexibility to increase their parking because we, we didn't have it. They had to go get a variance. The variance didn't come with any public benefits, right? Now, the planning board will have an opportunity to say, "Okay, we like this business, we want you to stay in town, we, we understand your needs, but here's what you, you need to do in order to achieve that open space," and it won't put all the onus on ZBA.
Couple of questions. Great presentation. Thank you so much. So in the, actually, while you're here, then I'll have you go to another side. So for example, EV charging stations, is that, I mean, is there further delineation, like two points for X number of charging stations? That's the first part of that question.
Talk to that, Ben.
Yep, so it's more stringent than the current Energy Code. So the EV charging here, it requires for a certain amount of chargers to be fully installed, the actual unit. The Energy Codes have just conduits that are required, so this would require a higher percentage of full charging units that need to be on-site.
Okay, but, and is it, are the number of EV charging stations, based on what we're talking about, fully installed, like a percent of parking spaces? Like, I guess I'm wondering, two points for what, one charging station, or 10 charging stations? We're just saying relative scale.
Yeah, so the, the prevailing Energy Code has 10% EV-ready, the newer one will be higher than that. So it would be 10% of that lot. What we have in here is, yep, so level two or level three charging stations are installed at least twice the minimum quantity specified by the prevailing building and Energy Code.
And the amount that's required by the building code is by the amount of parking?
Correct.
Okay, so if there are, okay, so if there are 100 parking spaces, then it would require 20 to have charging stations? Or 20 charging stations would be required? Am I understanding that based on the 20%?
Correct. Yeah, correct. It would have, they would have to have a minimum of those 20 chargers installed for level two or level three.
To get two points.
Correct.
Okay. And are those, are those charging stations understood to be privately managed, or, or private and for like use of, let's, what's a shopping plaza, so it's a little more public, but let's say it's a, a business, is it for use only by those employees, or for the public? Is there a delineation of that?
Well, when the planning board reviews projects, I don't know that they necessarily designate whether the charging stations are available for the, the public use. I, I don't believe so. So if like an office park was coming in, you know, those spaces are available for the employees, which is also valuable.
Yeah, no, I, I guess there's a greater public benefit, right, if they're, there's an understanding that they're available or whatever. It can depend upon location and all of that, so I guess-
It depends on the project.
It's just a question that came to mind. Ben, were you gonna?
Yeah, I can key in on that a little bit. Based off of kind of utility incentives and how they've been rolling out the past two years, it would definitely be more financially smart for a developer to have publicly facing chargers.
Get money back, right?
Because they'd get money back. So I would see that a lot of the developers would try to go that route.
Yeah.
Versus having a higher upfront cost for themselves.
They could even meter it separately at different times of the day, right?
Correct.
So off-hours or whatever for, yeah, okay.
Shelby, can I comment on that? I'm so sorry.
It was like a voice from God somewhere, like, Shelby.
So this is more, what we talked about earlier is incentive zoning. So I would never dream of making a private landowner require them to provide public parking. Well, I don't want to say never dream of it, I guess I, but, but the point is, this, this is an incentive. So the landowner, in order to get something, we might ask them, "Can you make some of these spots public?" Right? I mean, that, if there was a demonstrated need of public parking in that area.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, you know, the scope of, of what it means for two points.
It would be on an individual basis.
Sure, yep. And then on the first slide of this, this presentation, the, the chart where you had like special permit versus by right? So would, will this zoning change shift everything into by right?
No.
No?
No, we are not changing that. So any development that is allowed by right or by special permit could come in and obtain a special permit, or an additional special permit to allow for this.
Okay, thank you.
The basic odds changing is the open space.
Yeah.
We're, well, right now, it's only for multifamily, so we're expanding it to anybody that is allowed to develop based on the table of uses can request these things. And then we're allowing, we're adding an additional layer of the open space. So right now, someone can come in and ask for a dimensional waiver to the open space through the Planning Board's special permit for a multifamily. But we're, we're putting some additional requirements on that to incentivize them that, "Hey, if you're going to do this, we want XYZ in return." They are allowed by special permit, so they could come in, and they would need a special permit for the use from the Select Board, I believe, is the requirement. But they could also get a special permit from the Planning Board to vary the other requirements.
Okay. And the final question, you mentioned that like a green revenue account?
Yes.
I think you mentioned that the, the details of such and how those funds would be allocated would be determined by the Select Board?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm looking for the section that's in the actual bylaw.
Okay.
So one of the, this change actually came about, I believe, in January, and it is section, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53K, allows for the Select Board to essentially create regulations on a fund, so that when you create that fund, you don't need to go to town meeting to spend out of it. You can decide as a Select Board when and how to spend those funds.
So the, the bylaw doesn't define sort of, I mean, other than what you've presented, or here, does it define what is acceptable within that, within that green revenue, like?
It's suggested in here that it go towards fund various purposes related to environmental conservation, sustainability, and green initiatives. So that is something that we would have to work on together to find what those are. What the, the Planning Board has, has talked about with accounts like that is you don't want to tie yourself to something too restrictive because those could fund things like the B-Wall. It could also fund things like putting solar panels on one of the town buildings. So those are the types of things that we're, we're thinking about. But those regulations would need to be created.
Is that green revenue fund, a fund to be created, and does that have to go to town meeting for approval?
From what, my understanding is it does not need to go to town meeting for approval.
No, the actual creation of the fund?
My understanding is-
But we usually have to-
My understanding is that it does not need to go to town meeting for that, but I can clarify with town council.
All right. Any other questions from your board, Patrick?
I'm, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that anybody on the planning board wishes to bring tonight? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Motion to adjourn the Select Board meeting.
Thank you, Patrick.